Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, the first item on our agenda today is a special presentation. It's a proclamation to our Clayton Parks Commission.
Role call.
Oh, yeah. First item's role call.
Mr. Bachman?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here. We're all present. Sorry about that. Yeah, they always picking on us. What's up with that? Okay, so we are gonna have a special presentation tonight. It's a proclamation for our Clayton Park Commission. And I want to say, this is long overdue, but thanks to Mr. Henning, this was his suggestion, but it's, we're real proud of what our parks do and you guys put on a lot of events and it's a lot of hard work, so. Okay, if I could have all the members of the Parks Commission that are present here today come up? Again, we want to sincerely thank you folks for the stuff that you do. You put on a lot of events, you've planned a lot of things and given our residents a lot of really great events and it just really adds to the quality of life and value here in Clayton, so we do appreciate that. So I'm gonna read the proclamation as it's written. "The Parks Advisory Commission has dedicated untold amount of volunteer hours promoting the natural beauty and recreational benefits of the Clayton community by creating numerous outreach events for the entire community to enjoy throughout the calendar year. The Parks Advisory Commission has created special events which have become an annual traditions for the community's youth, memories which are suited to last a lifetime. The Parks Advisory Commission has successfully collaborated with a cross-section of dedicated Clayton and Northmont businesses to provide free entertainment and refreshments for families and residents of all ages at programs throughout the year. The Parks Advisory Commission organizes annual cleanup events in all of Clayton Parks to ensure all of Clayton's green spaces continue to look fantastic for families to enjoy. The Parks Advisory Commission has sponsored several new planting initiatives throughout the entire Clayton Park system, assisting with the Clayton Service Department in their continual efforts to replace aging landscaping and brush areas with new vibrant upstarts. The Parks Advisory Commission is a shining reason why the Clayton community continues to be ranked as the best community to raise a family in Montgomery County. We honor the Parks Advisory Commission members by naming the Sunday before Labor Day Parks Advisory Commission Day. We hope the residents in the entire Clayton and Northmont community will enjoy all of the Clayton Parks and playgrounds while also realizing the continual and vast list of improvement projects currently being implemented across the Clayton Park landscape, all of which are directly inspired by these folks right here, the Clayton Parks Advisory Commission." I'm Mike Stevens, Mayor of the City of Clayton, Ohio, and the elected and appointed officials of the city wish to acknowledge the dedication, efforts, and talents of each member of the City of Clayton Parks Advisory Commission. So again, we all want to thank you for the work that you guys do, so. Would you have a certificate for each of you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Get a group picture with the mic up front, too, like right here. Can you get a group picture up here?
Picture.
We appreciate all of you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was gonna say, because we're gonna be on a.
Earl.
I know.
We're gonna give you this one.
I'm taller than her.
You get a little special.
Some of us here look really tall.
Hey, thanks, I appreciate it.
Is this my time to speak or what?
Yeah, let's, oh, you wanna speak?
Heck, yeah, I'm ready.
Sure, of course I am.
I'm watching. You think I'm gonna pass up a time?
I know you're shy. Look, he's got notes.
Yes, he's got notes. He's got a speech.
All I, all I want to say is, you know, Sunday's gonna be a big day for Clayton. It's, it's a free, everything is free. We've got 700 hot dogs coming. We got, we got popcorn, we're gonna be popping at 3:30. We'll do about three or four great big black bags full. Then we're going to have the fireworks at nine o'clock. We got jumpy houses coming. Jack's got both those coming. Snow cones, I see cotton candy, potato chips, hot dogs, and water. Fireworks at nine o'clock, around nine o'clock, and we put our sister city up the street to shame with our fireworks. So if you don't, if you don't get over there to see them, that's your fault. But this is, I still have, yeah, three more, three more that's on my crew. And I want to say ladies, and I'll check for my daughter, but this, this is the workforce. We go there to have fun and we go to have fellowship with everybody in the community. So if you see, when you come there on the fourth, just come over and pat them on the back a little bit, because they work hard. These, these ladies work hard. My coworkers. That's how I'm supposed to say it. My coworkers. Okay, okay. I can talk a whole night long. We got a lot, we, we got a lot of good things coming to the parks. You're gonna have pickleball coming. It's, according to Randy here, it's looking like it might be first of next year, but it's gonna be a lot of fun. I'm watching television and watch, watching it being played and the emphasis on it is so great. We got golf, regular golf, and we got disc golf, so how can you beat that? And then our parks are really looking good. Our park down off of Westbrook, down on Lebon Court, we're starting to put the asphalt down and it's gonna be gorgeous in that park. Got a few trees to take down, but that's nature. But anyhow, the other parks are all looking pretty good. We get the bathrooms next year done at Westbrook Park. That'll bring that park up to, to perfect. So it's, it's a lot of labor we do and a lot of thinking we're trying to do. We're trying to keep the, the golf course every month with something new. We've got senior citizen centers coming. We're gonna do, every month do a senior citizens and then in February, we're coming back with Overpopular, the dance party again.
Yes.
And if you miss that, I'm gonna get out and dance myself. But anyhow, that, it turned out really good and people get a chance to see us. We've got a beautiful golf course, we've got a beautiful building, and it's time we use it right and we push it along and get a lot of people to rent and stuff like it, keep it going and make Clayton proud, so let's get out here, girls, let's get this done.
Good job.
Thank you. You want this to go on, between all of us? I'm sorry. All right, you ready?
The thorn between your mites.
Great, thanks guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate all of you.
Well, yeah, maybe during Sunday.
Good job.
Okay, thanks again to those folks. They really do a fantastic job and again, it just add a lot to our city. So we have a second presentation tonight. We have Mr. Mark Gavin from Power Clean Future Ohio. Step up and the floor is yours, sir. Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Leadership and Staff. I really appreciate it, being here tonight. My name is Mark Gavin Senior. I am the Campaign Director of Power Clean Future Ohio and I work on energy aggregation, specifically around renewable aggregation in, in communities throughout the state. I know that you all have already taken a really great first step in pitting aggregation on the ballot. That's awesome, that's amazing, and I know that a lot of your neighbors are seeing big savings, especially Dayton, and I want to make sure that you all can see those same savings and also do some good for your community and the rest of the state by going renewable. So I wanna, I do wanna preface this with, I'm gonna talk a little bit about PCFO, Power Clean Future Ohio, first, just a bit about who we are, and then I'm gonna dive into aggregation and what we want to do in your city. But I will say that we are really ready to spend $22,000 to make sure that your initiative passes as long as you are gonna, as long as you plan to go renewable. So we are really excited for this opportunity for you all and for ourselves, too. So if you have the packet here, the first page, just a little bit about PCFO. We launched in February 2020, so we've been around for almost three years now. We're a newer organization, though. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we view ourselves as a resource for communities, that's really all we are. We don't charge communities for anything, we are, we are free. You'll see at the bottom of your page, it says, it says to join PCFO, local elected officials need to pass a resolution or having the executive make an official commitment. I'm not here today to ask you to join Power Clean Future Ohio. I might come back at another point in the near future to do so. You don't have to do that to enjoy our resources for the aggregation campaign, so I do want to let that be known now, but I would love for you all to join Power Clean Future Ohio and I'll tell you a little more about us. So the next few pages you'll see are actually a lot of our member organizations. If you know some of these orgs, they're big national orgs and others are small, local ones throughout the state. So you'll see like ACE, Alliance for Climate Education, they are a big massive national organization. Then you'll also see Sustainable Delaware, that's just Delaware, Ohio, like 40 minutes north of Columbus, only about 40,000 people there. So like, big organizations, small organizations, mid-sized ones, most of them though based here in Ohio and not necessarily centralized to Columbus. And as we get through our coalition members, just want to talk a bit about our goals as Power Clean Future Ohio. We want to make sure that we are reducing costs for local governments, businesses, and residents. We also want to make sure that we're growing the clean energy economy in Ohio. Southern Ohio specifically is primed for about $80 billion worth of investment in renewable energy sectors, but we need to make sure that, we just want to make sure that we are, it's always weird hearing your own voice, right? We just want to make sure that we are, what's that, what's that? We want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to move Ohio in that direction so that we can enjoy that $80 billion worth of investment and especially here in southern Ohio and clean energy, as long as we have the demand, it'll come. And we want to implement equitable clean energy policy with input from across the community and across the state. We want to make sure that we're not just coming into your community and saying, hey, here's how we do things, but also that we're taking your input and we're working very closely with not only City Council and the mayor, but also working closely with, you know, community groups and just citizens who are involved in your community. Power Clean Future Ohio, as of late last week, we are up to 37 different Ohio communities that have joined, and once again, these communities are as small as Lancaster, Ohio, and as large as Cleveland and Columbus. Those, these are some of our, so we kind of expand the gambit there when it comes to size. We work with anyone, with any community, whether they're a small village or a major, major city. And now I will jump a bit into community source aggregation. I know that Council has been pretty well briefed on CCA, so I don't want to do a lot of review for you all, but I do want to just say a bit, aggregation gives local governments the power of collective bargaining for better terms on energy and can be used for gas, electricity, or both. It's a well-established policy tool in 10 states with seven others considering, I think we're actually about eight now, and it's very prominent here in Ohio. It's been the law of Atlanta since 1999 and hundreds of communities have used it. I think we're maybe over 450 right now, may, maybe close to 500. I can't remember exactly how many communities are aggregated in Ohio, but it's a, it's a ton of communities. And as we know, with community aggregation, there is a source where we are buying and building electricity supply, so there might be, you know, solar in some location that may or may not be in Ohio, but we're gonna buy that energy and then it'll be delivered to you locally through, through your, who already does your, your, sorry, I'm blanking on the word, your electricity. So it'll be delivered to you through your current electricity provider. Your bill doesn't change, like, your bill's gonna change just a hair, but you're gonna get the same bill from the same company. Outside of that, nothing else changes and it just gets to your homes. So you don't notice the lights flicker when things change over or anything else. Why aggregate for 100% renewable energy? You can lock in competitive, frequently, competitive frequently money-saving electric rates. You can see that with your neighbors in Dayton, they're definitely saving a lot of money in Dayton right now. You can make the city all that more, all that more attractive to future generations. My wife and I, we bought our first home about a year ago in Grove City, Ohio, and this was one of our major factors in finding a house. I'm 32, she's 27, and we wanted to make sure that we were living somewhere that had access to renewable energy, because we know areas like that are prone to grow and we want, we want to make sure we have the best resources for our children. And we want to, we want more and more businesses to come into your community, that, more businesses, they really have sustainability goals and they want to be in communities that can meet those sustainability goals or at least mirror the goals that they have. And obviously, we want to do our part to address the climate, the climate emergency, you know, I'm sure that we're often a little hotter the September 1st than we have in the past, so we just want to make sure that we are leaving a better, you know, a better world for our children, grandchildren. So there's strong support for, for, there's strong support for action by the government on renewable energy. It really appeals to people from the ages of 18 to 44, especially they are willing to pay, you know, up to $20 more a month for renewable energy. Now, that said, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will have to pay $20 more a month. I can't guarantee anything on price, but what I can say is that there are massive savings to be had across the state right now on renewable energy. And then, you know, central Ohioans, and sorry, that's just central Ohioans, this is a PowerPoint guy, a little messed up and wonky this week, but central Ohioans have constantly chosen to vote in support of aggregation. So Columbus, you know, is a heavily Democratic city, went 76%. Worthington, 75%, and where I live, Grove City, went 63% and Grove City is a pretty Aggregation for 100% renewable energy is the single most effective way that a municipality or a local government can affect, can affect their carbon emissions. You can drop them by up to 30% if you do go down, if you do decide to aggregate for 100% renewable energy, you can drop your carbon emissions by 30%, which is a really, really massive boon for not only our environment, but also for your economy, because people are gonna want to come here. Depending on how you run the program, you can also, you may also be able to get grants. Many aggregators in our state do give out grants to their member communities. I know there's organizations like a SOPEC back here who does that, so that's a massive benefit to add. There have been communities that have done things like install solar charging stations or even, they've done, oh geez, I'm so sorry, I'm blanking so bad tonight, but solar charging stations or also, you know, fleet assessments, just different things like that they can use these grants for. And also it builds on the sustainability efforts of your community. And like I said earlier, we want to make sure that we can create good jobs in Ohio, especially southern Ohio. There's a really, really great, you know, opportunity for us to build out the new economy when it comes to renewable jobs here in the state. We have a very strong manufacturing base in the state and, you know, it would be a shame to let that go to waste as the world changes and we don't want to leave Ohio behind. So how can PCFO help your community? So we have a committed budget for Clayton right now, as long as you all decide to go renewable, and that is a $22,000 budget to get this across the finish line at the ballot this November. So what that'll pay for, there's community education, so it's community, community event tabling, so if, you know, I would love to work with the city on this to find the different events in your community, but, you know, we will send people out to, you know, sit down and like really talk to the community here. Neighborhood organizing, we believe, we don't believe in sending people from the outside to like talk to everyone in the neighborhood. We like to build relationships and have neighbors talk to neighbors, and so we plan to do that here as well, the neighborhood organizing aspect of it. We want neighbors talking to neighbors. The last thing that I, that I want is anyone feeling uncomfortable because someone came from Columbus or Cleveland to knock on their door. I want it to be someone who's, you know, a friend, a neighbor. And information sessions, so we plan to host at least one, if not four, information sessions in the city where we bring in more experts on aggregation and give a deep dive on aggregation and 100% renewable energy, so, so that the community can feel informed, they can ask questions, it's not a quick conversation at the doors, they can really come in and sit down for an hour and a half and learn more and ask questions. As far as communications are concerned, we'll make, we'll obviously give you all local guidance, you know, what 100% renewable energy would do for your community, how it would change your community, and how you can press, push that information out. We'll create a website, we'll do digital outreach, so this looks like more or less ads that are targeting your community, and yard signs. We also plan to send three flights of direct mail to every registered voter in the city. We want to make sure that we're covering all of them at least via mail. I'm not sure we'll get to all of them on doors or at info sessions, but we want to make sure that we're at least getting every registered voter via mail. And once again, like I said, our budget is $22,000 for Clayton. We're really excited about this opportunity and I'm here for any questions. Also, my contact information's on the back sheet there.
You mentioned massive savings across the state of Ohio in the renewable energy. Can you give me an example of one?
Yeah, once again, Dayton's a great example. I'm sure you've heard this one already. They're paying, what, 7.457 cent per kilowatt hour against the AES standard rate of, what is this, I think 10.31 cent per kilowatt hour, if I remember those numbers correctly. So that's a really big savings right there, but I know other communities like Logan, Ohio, for instance, they're paying $5, or I'm sorry, 5.36, 5.36 cent per kilowatt hour. So, not $5, but 5.36 cent per kilowatt hour. And, and that's against that same standard offering, so like literally pennies, like so it's a massive amount, so imagine going down from, you know, $10 or $10 cent per kilowatt hour to five and a half, essentially. So there definitely are savings there.
So Mark, excuse me, so just for clarification, for Power Clean Future Ohio to come in and help the city of Clayton, we would have to commit 100% to green energy. So with that, if we were to do that, our residents wouldn't get a choice whether they wanted to do brown energy or green energy, it would have to be green energy.
Correct. Well, I have a question on the, the green energy, because that's the part that I, that I really like about your presentation here. So doesn't the energy that you would be essentially, I think, billing for, doesn't that still come from AES? So AES, yeah, they move it for us. They're, they're not for us, but for you, rather. They, basically, they are the intermediary, they're the middleman now under aggregation. So is AES a green company? Uh, no. So how, how does, how do we get electricity from them, which we're getting now, how is it considered renewable from them, you know, from their, the source, which is AES, you know, to my house? Yeah. Where's the green, where's the green part come in? Yeah, that's a great question. So there's something called renewable energy credits or RECs. So essentially, your community would work with your aggregator to buy these RECs and the RECs mean this energy maybe was produced in a different state, they bought the rights to it and now they're using that here. Now, that said, part of why it's so important to get more and more communities in Ohio to go renewable is because we need to build up that actual infrastructure to have locally-generated power in Ohio. We need to make sure that there is a demand for it. So yeah, I mean, essentially, to answer your question, you're basically buying the rights to renewable energy, but AES is delivering the same load to you for now. I guess it would make more sense if you were like here trying to sell us windmills, you know, or something like that. I get that. I understand that part, but I don't, I don't, I don't get the renewable part, you know, if we're still gonna be the same supplier. I mean, it looks to me like, I don't mean no disrespect, I'm trying to figure this out, but it seems to me like, you know, your company is taking over the billing, basically, at least for now, and maybe in the future, you know, you build a windmill somewhere, is that what you're saying? So we're not taking on any billing. Once again, we're a nonprofit, we have staff of five people, two part-time folks, we're not taking on anyone's electricity bill. Essentially, what we're, we are acting as like just a resource for your community to make sure that this passes at the ballot. But that said, yeah, when it comes to, when it comes to that renewable energy generation, it's not gonna happen in a large way in Ohio until there's more communities that demand it. And that's what makes this, this a tough sell sometimes, because their community is like, well, I'm still getting brown power. It's like, well, yeah, for now, but eventually, like our politicians in Columbus, they know the, they know that the impact that renewable energy can have on this state, they really do, and so, but they're not gonna move on it in a good, fair way until they see more and more communities who actually ask for it and desire it.
Are you aggregating the cost of renewable energy or what? I mean, I think I'm a little confused, too, as far as what you're actually trying to do.
Yeah, Councilwoman, so I, once again, I'm just a resource. I'm not here to aggregate the cost or aggregate the energy. I want to make sure that you, I mean, you all have already taken that first step to aggregate your energy, but when it comes to, when it comes to cost, I mean, aggregation gives you all the actual power to bargain on those, on cost, on, on sources, you know, and other terms like grants, like I mentioned before. The aggregation gives your community that actual power, that authority to bargain. Personally, I just want to, I want to make sure that it passes here. I just want to make sure that we see that happen. I have no actual like stake in this, I don't get paid any extra if you guys aggregate or you don't aggregate, if you go green, you don't go green. I just want to stay in Ohio my whole life and I want it to be safe and healthy for my family.
So Mark, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding and maybe this will help Council and you can correct me if I'm wrong. So the purpose of Power Clean Future Ohio, at least it sounds to me, is to build that critical mass, so we have all of these communities who are now saying that we want clean energy in Ohio, so then we can start to get producers in Ohio to create the clean energy, correct?
Correct.
Do I have that correct?
Yes.
So the purpose of you coming here tonight to talk to City Council and to offer your services to get this aggregation across the finish line is so that Clayton will commit to being 100% green to help build that critical mass?
Correct.
Okay.
I have one more comment about the, about the cost. Again, I'm, I'm trying to educate myself on the, on the fly here. Of course. So I would be really open to this aggregation, because right now I'm neutral on it, I gotta say. I just don't know enough about it. I would be really in favor of this if, if you would come in and say, I'm with X company and we can always provide you the lowest rates.
I have one more comment about the, about the cost. Again, I'm, I'm trying to educate myself on the, on the fly here.
Of course.
So I would be really open to this aggregation because right now I'm neutral on it, I gotta say. I just don't know enough about it. I would be really in favor of this if, if you would come in and say, I'm with X company and we can always provide you the lowest rates. But what I don't want to do is, I don't think it's, I don't think it's something, I'll just speak for myself, it's not something I want to take on to have to renegotiate every year because if, if you or another company, you know, or other aggregate company would come here and say, you know, yeah, you're paying five cents this year, but next year it's 11 cents. I don't want to have to renegotiate every year, you know, with a, with a different company. And I'd really like it if you would say, hey, we'll give you the five cents and if the, you know, if AES is five cents next year, we're doing four cents. You know, that would get me on board right away.
So, so I'll say this, once again, we're not aggregators at all, like that's not, not what we do. But it's, if any aggregator ever comes to you and says, we can be the lowest cost, they're lying to you. Like that's just bottom line, like no one can guarantee that. But what they can say, they can show you their history, they can show you where they're at right now, but no one can say, hey, for the next five years, we're going to make sure we beat AES. They, they just can't do that. But with that said, you, once again, you can always renegotiate, but only outside of, only when your contract's coming up for renewal. So basically what happens is most aggregation contracts are two to three years long. And I would say within a year to six month window, six month a year window at the end there, that's when that renegotiation starts, but also other aggregators are going to come knocking at your door. So you'll hear, you'll hear pitches from, you know, agents from different companies, you'll hear pitches from Council of Government, like Sopac, you'll hear pitches from a ton of different organizations, nonprofit, for-profit. But ultimately it's going to be up to you and your community on what you decide to go with. And, and trust me, you do want that flexibility though. You don't want to be locked into like, oh, we have the, well, no one can guarantee the lowest rate, but you don't want to be locked into something that says, these are our people. You want to make sure that you can, that you can be flexible when those contracts end anyways. So, and, and really any aggregator is going to have contracts that have terms to them. So it's not going to be every year, it's going to be every two to three years most likely, but still that gives you a, a nice place to be nimble. And, you know, if your aggregator doesn't come to you when your contract's kind of coming up for renewal, you should probably go to them and say, hey, what's going on? Because maybe they don't have the lowest price and that's why they're not knocking on your door and they're just hoping that you just stick with them, you know?
That was going to, next question to Martina. So if we decide to go renewable, given it's less right now, but then AES says in two years, they would be less, what type of, I mean, would we have to get this reaffirmed by the residents or once the aggregation passes, you always have those negotiating powers?
Yeah, once the aggregation passes, you're good. And I think he's making a good point is that you're going to be locked in probably for a couple of years and then you're going to have to renegotiate from that point.
And that could be between renewable and brown. And we would probably go with what would be less for the residents.
Yes, that would.
I couldn't imagine saying, oh, we're going to go the more expensive route because, yeah.
Right. And I mean, and that's one of the things that we need to take into consideration. I know Mark is offering the services of this, this organization, but green energy may not always be the lower option. And if we, you know, off, take their services, we're committing to 100% green energy.
For how long?
I'm assuming it would be indefinitely is.
So, so here's what I'll say. What you have on the ballot right now, just aggregates, that's all it is. What, what I'm looking for right now is a commitment, whether it's through a resolution to go 100% renewable on this next contract, or I guess it would be your first contract, or, you know, a commitment to join like a Sopac, for instance, like Sopac, they have only provided 100% renewable energy to community, so we trust that they will continue doing that. So, you know, saying we will join Sopac as a community or we will, you know, aggregate for 100% renewable energy in this first contract, either of those can help. But there's nothing you can do to go back and change your ballot language and I'm not asking you to do that either. So really either of those, either of those options for our resources essentially.
And what happens if the renewable is more expensive than we're? I mean, the whole point of doing this was to have a lower rate.
So part of what you can do there is you can always wait. You don't have to immediately jump into a contract. You can always, you know, take bids and listen to folks, but some communities have waited a year or two years even before they've actually gotten to their first contract. You know, getting this passed at the ballot just gives you the authority. So just gives you, gives you the authority, there's, you don't have to jump into anything, you don't have to rush into anything if you're not ready to, if you're not seeing the rates that could apply to your community. But I will say, I, I would be pretty proactive in your search for energy providers. There's definitely great ones, like I said before, Sopac, they've, they've only produce, only supply 100% renewable, but definitely be proactive and I, yeah, does that answer your question?
Well, just kind of following up on what Kenny said, you know, it's, I mean, in his presentation, he said people are willing to pay more for, for green energy, which I, I would be, I'll just speak for myself, I would be also. So I don't think the whole issue is money. I think that's what, that's what brought it to the table here, but I think it's a bigger issue than that. But again, I'm looking now at, you know, AES is our supplier and they're not green. And I just, I'm just thinking like how, how, what timeframe are you looking at that we would be getting green, you know, truly green energy?
I can't say that for sure. I really can't and I wish I could, but I, I think we're a little ways down the road from it. But there, there is some generation in Ohio and there is more projects that hopefully will come online at some point. It's not like there's no renewable energy in Ohio, but there definitely needs to be a lot more. So I can't really, I am sorry, I can't answer that question for you, Mr. Mayor, but, yeah.
I just got back, I drove through Kansas and they have, they must have a million windmills out there. I mean, they are all over the place. And not that I really want that, but I mean, again, that's kind of what I'm envisioning as green or solar, like we had talked earlier, so.
Yeah, no, I get that. And also just going back to the price conversation too, once again, renewable products, they have been known to be competitive and also beat, like I said, the AES standard rate, right, the standard offering there. So I definitely don't want you all getting too down on like, you know, is it cheap energy or, you know, green energy? They, it doesn't have to be either or, it doesn't, it can be both.
So Mark, can I walk you through this just so I'm clear?
Yes, sir.
You're not an aggregate, right?
In what way?
Well.
Oh, aggregate, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said advocate, yeah.
No, you're definitely an advocate, you're not an aggregate.
For what, sir?
So what, what you're asking us to do tonight, well, not necessarily tonight, but what your, your pitch is, hey, we'll help you get your ballot initiative passed. And in exchange, we just want you to commit to go with the renewable energy aggregates as opposed to brown aggregates. Is that, is that basically what you're asking?
Correct.
So that who that is, who we go with is up to us.
Correct.
Okay, I think I understand now. Thanks.
No, of course.
I've got just one thing. So is this something, if we don't commit to this now, because mind you, we're two months away from when this is on the ballot. So everything that you're talking about here, and would we have to change the language on the ballot? Let's say for now, we say, no thanks on this. Obviously then we would lose that $22,000 that you guys are of effort, that you're putting forward here. Is this something, but let's say down the road, we say, okay, we do want to, you know, commit to this here. Obviously that means it's already, if it's already passed on the ballot, I mean, is that something we can still get into down the road?
So I can't say that. There, there may be some, there may be some resources just to like guide you. Like, like one thing about being in PCFO, if you do decide to become a Power Clean Future Ohio community, and I'll reach out to all of you more about that later. But one thing about PCFO though, is if you do join, we offer tons of free resources and assistance. So if you do need help getting into an aggregation contract, even if you don't take our help now, we can help you down the road, next year or the year after, whenever you do decide to get into a contract. But I, I would say, if I were in your shoes, I would want this help here. And the reason why.
Or you're advocating for it. Well, so basically if, if we don't do this now, you're saying we might not have that opportunity with you down the road, even if we want it, even if we're, if we're not comfortable with this right now, but we are in a couple of years, you're, you're saying we wouldn't be able to, to join up with, with this?
So, so the way the budget is structured is structured around a political campaign. So basically what that means is we wouldn't necessarily need that, or at least not to that extent. If you already aggregate it, but you decide to go green, like in two or three years after a contract, you wouldn't really, we wouldn't really need that same kind of money to get that done. Because you would, you would already be aggregated, so we doesn't have to go back to the voters, we don't have to talk to the voters again about it.
Well, right, but the aggregate, if, if we pass, if the aggregation passes in, in November, it can be brown, it can be green here, but if we say in a few years, we want to make, we want to go all green and we want to join up, why wouldn't, that's going towards your cause. And that's going towards, you know, getting more communities in Ohio for that. So I'm really not seeing why it's kind of a, now it's an all or nothing is, is what I'm getting from you.
Well, because, because those specific funds are for actual political campaign. If it's already passed, we don't have to go to the ballot, so the funds, the funds look different. Also, these, these funds are just specifically for political campaigns to move aggregation forward. But like I said before, if you all do join PCFO as a community, we do have technical resources. Like I said, we have a staff of about five people right now, but we also have different consultants that we work with throughout the state to help, to help communities. So it's not that there wouldn't be resources for your community, but at the same time, you wouldn't actually need the same resources because this is all about voter outreach.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mark?
Go ahead.
No. Greg, anything?
I, I just guess for me, I don't know how many resources are out there for the clean energy. And that's where I'm back and forth with it because at this point I don't feel like we're there yet. And for me, I don't, I may be in the future is something to look at, but cost savings wise, you know, I don't know if it's worth it. I don't know if it's going to be a cost savings. I, I, I'm just up in the air with Americans will pay nearly $20 more. I don't know that that's accurate and I don't know where the study comes from, so I'm just.
Yeah, I'll make sure I send you all a copy of this, but, and sorry, I didn't realize you all had audio visuals, some, some places do, some places don't, so I just printed it out to be safe. But I was sending you all a copy of this and at the bottom, you'll actually see the citation there. I think, I know one of those is from the Pew Research Center, I can't remember who the other studies from. But yeah, those, I didn't just pull those numbers out of thin air for sure.
Just to follow up on what Tina had said, you know, we, we represent the citizens of the city from the standpoint, and this is going to be a utility cost that they will be paying. And I think that we need to be doing our due diligence and doing our representation and information gathering to prevent or present that information to them as far as the best information we can get to give them the best information since we're asking them to take this on as being 100% commitment. Not everybody can take on a more expensive utility bill as, you know, not everybody can take higher cost and they're going to be looking more for how can I save money? You know, everybody's trying to save money every, every direction they can, otherwise we wouldn't be doing aggregation to begin with. So I think we need to be doing our diligence in terms of finding the information as far as what the green energy costs would be and having that information as comparison to what other generation costs are from anybody else. Because that information is going to be what people ask going into the, into a ballot issue. Essentially that's what you're asking as far as a grouping to support or to try to push the initiative through on a ballot box. And I'm not saying not to take your money as far as help, that maybe some of the efforts that you're asking to provide would be best addressed or best put after the fact. Because we have to wait for this thing to pass. If it doesn't pass, then, you know, it's been nice talking to you. But if it does pass, okay, now we have the opportunity to basically sit down with the people in the community essentially saying, here's, here's what we would like to do, give us your input. Because I think that's what we need, is we need the citizens' input. Because if we put forth with something with little information and then suddenly we're asking 15,000 other people to basically, you know, support what our decision is, you know, we may see seven different people appear the next time there's an election. And, you know, that's, that's the cost. But I want to do what's best for the people in the community.
Yeah, Anna, thank you for that. I do understand that, I completely do. And, you know, one thing I've seen, I've seen some aggregation campaigns, both for renewable and not for renewable, at the ballot that we were not involved in. And they were pretty much just run by the city and they weren't yes or vote yes on this. It was just like, hey, there's a campaign, go vote. Because that's usually what municipalities can do. We're actually able to say, hey, go vote yes on this and we can do that voter outreach and we can do everything we can to make sure that this passes. Because I, I'll tell you this, we only did one of these campaigns last year and we did it down in Portsmouth, Ohio, in Scioto County. That's coal country, it's literally across the river from Kentucky. We saw coal barges going across the Ohio River as we were down there. And we, we lost that campaign by 23 votes, which was a really hard campaign to lose, but the county had also paid aggregation on the ballot, on the ballot that year. And when counties do it, it's for all of the unincorporated territories, territories rather. And it was just for general, you know, aggregation. And when they did this, the county, the, the county really came down on our messaging around renewable energy really hard because they wanted to create a little distance between the two ballot initiatives, even though voters weren't going to see both of them. And what happened was that we lost ours by, I think it was 1.7% and they lost theirs. And I cannot remember the number, but it was, it was double digit percentage wise. And mostly because they were not able to go and do that messaging to their community, they couldn't talk to voters directly, they couldn't go knock on doors, they couldn't send mail, they weren't able to do that. Meanwhile, we were actually able to do that and do it multiple times to the same people in some instances. So I, that's why I do stress like our help, not just because I think that we just do such a great job, but specifically because it means a lot to have those financial resources to push this forward. I know some communities like Trotwood, they, I think they voted on this in 2016 and it failed, but they, you know, from what I understand, they didn't actually put a lot into it. Right now, we're in talks with Trotwood to do the same thing for them. We, we really want to push this through, especially in this region here. I, I'm from Northeast Ohio. I feel like Southeast Ohio is, is, is this region is a lot like where I'm from in the Youngstown area. And I feel like a lot of times we get ignored by the bigger nonprofits or bigger industries. And I, so yeah, I want to see something like this happen in an area like this. And I want to make sure that you guys have the resources to do that. And if, if there is no yes campaign, I can guarantee you this anyway, there's going to be a no campaign.
So do you have a, a source of what the renewable energy cost, unit cost is over like the last year moving forward?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you have some information that actually shows, you know, over the past year, what the unit costs for green energy costs have been? You know, like the supply costs that we get now from AES, you know, wherever your supplier is, I mean, it's on your utility bill, you know, so we have something we can actually sit down and actually compare with.
So, so that's going to differ between aggregator to aggregator and whoever could find you the best price? So I, I can't say for sure, but let me see what I can.
Or if you have a resource that actually can provide that information, so we can look it up ourselves as far as finding out what those costs are.
And just know that those costs, they're, they're going to shift too. But yeah, let me see what I can find out for you.
Any other questions or comments?
I agree with Greg. We don't have anything to compare to and that's hard to make a decision when you don't have anything to compare to, so.
I would just also add, I think the residents came to us to put this on the ballot. This wasn't a, I mean, this really wasn't our idea. We had residents come to the meeting and ask for it. So they want this for lower rates. I want it for a lower rate, ours went up by 50% or whatever. So I just want to be very like careful of ensuring the group of residents that were here that want lower rates, get that, because that's what the community as a whole wants, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Okay. Well, thank you for coming in. We appreciate you. We appreciate the information.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Best of luck to you on your campaign. Okay, so, the next item on our agenda is the clerk's report.
Okay. First, you have before you the council workshop minutes of August 18th, 2022.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that was unanimous.
You also have before you the council meeting minutes of August 18th, 2022.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. And the next item is old business.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have two items to bring up to council. The first is a request to add resolution 092261 to tonight's agenda. And the purpose of that is to correct a previous resolution, which was 082258 from August 18th. In that, there was a line item with respect to the general fund appropriation amount for operating expenses that was indicated in that resolution as $67,680. That should have been $67,780. So, the purpose of this resolution would be to correct that $100 differential, which was a typing error in that one. So, we just need a motion, a second, and a vote to add that to the agenda.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, motion to add resolution R092261 to our agenda tonight. Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachmann. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So, $100 difference.
I just want to make sure there's no-
Yeah.
Avoid any issues with the auditor, so I want to make sure we have a legislation paper trail for that.
Exactly the right thing to do.
And then the second request is, when I drafted up the new business for this evening's meeting, which is the ordinances 29, 30, 31, and then the two resolutions of 59 and 60, I inadvertently put the 08 for August on those instead of the 09 number for September. So, the request is simply just to take a voice vote to correct that 08 designation in each of those to an 09 designation.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, okay. I never make administrative mistakes, you know.
Well, that was my first one as well.
It's hard for me to, yeah, so. Okay, good, yeah. Okay, that's, those things are fixed. So, the next thing on our agenda is old business. And we have, looks like, six ordinances tonight. And it looks like they're all emergencies. So, will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0082221. An ordinance approving an amendment to the Clay Township, City of Clayton, Joint Economic Development District contract to remove specified parcels of real estate therefrom, and declaring an emergency.
Martina, she said 08?
Those were introduced at the last meeting, so the 08 category on those is correct. It's just the new legislation.
I, I move we approve the emergency.
Second.
Motion to approve the emergency by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And is there a motion on the ordinance?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lieberman, second by Mr. Bachmann. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0082222. An ordinance to maintain lighting assessment and declaring an emergency.
Move for the emergency.
Motion to move for emergency by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll move we approve the motion.
Second.
Motion to approve the motion, or, motion to approve the ordinance by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0082223. An ordinance authorizing the submission of the 2022-2023 North Clayton Community Authority Charge Assessments to the Montgomery County Auditor and declaring an emergency.
I'll move for the emergency.
Motion to move to an emergency, sec, by Ms. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Is there a motion for the ordinance?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Lieberman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0082224. An ordinance certifying unpaid charges for nuisance assessments for 2022-2023 to the Montgomery County Auditor for collection with real estate taxes and declaring an emergency.
I'll move to approve the emergency.
Motion to emergency by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll move for the ordinance.
Second.
Motion to pass the ordinance by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0082225. An ordinance certifying unpaid charges for grass and weed cutting for 2022-2023 to the Montgomery County Auditor for collection with real estate taxes and declaring an emergency.
Move for emergency.
Motion to declare an emergency by Ms. Kelly, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Martina, the only question I have is, are you able to check and see if we were able to increase fines for next year?
Yeah, so I, I had sent an email to council a few days ago, I think. In essence, basically, those charges need to be online and reasonable with the expenses incurred by the city. So, if you take that up to, let's say, you know, $200 for the first mow, $300 for the next, $500 for the next, I don't see where that's going to be reasonably related to the cost that, that the city is putting out. So, at this point, I would not, and I did look at other cities, went back, because I had looked at that last October, it came up then. Went back and looked at other cities, and we are sort of right in there at the reasonable amount that other cities are, so.
I wouldn't say like $100, but some type of increase for the cost of living that the employees are going to get, and the increase in fuel, I mean, something.
Yeah, if there's an increase in fuel that we can track with that, then, of course, we could add that in. But it's going to have to be reasonably related to the, to the expenses that, and the cost that the city puts out to mow those areas.
Okay, so, a 10% increase would be reasonable.
Well, you'd have to look at, and see what the, the cost of the gas of the increase to the city has. So, I would look at, you know, before the gas price went up, what do we pay now? What have we paid before, and do a price comparison in order to see what's reasonable. Because I don't know if 10% would, would accurately reflect that cost, increased cost in gas or not, so.
Just so we can do something.
Would that be a surcharge then?
Well, you could add it to, you could amend the codified ordinance to add that increase into it. That's what we would need to do.
Okay, thank you. I just want to see some type of increase for next year.
Okay, is, is there-
I'll move we approve the motion. Excuse me, the, the ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Mr. Lieberman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And will you read the final ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0082226. An ordinance to impose assessments upon owners of real property and arrears for payment of fees for waste hauling and disposal services for 2022-2023, and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency.
Second.
Motion to declare an emergency by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, is there a motion for the ordinance?
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to accept as written, and second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously also.
Can I just ask, did we make a statement as to why these were all done as emergencies? Just so people don't think we were just running through things as quickly as possible.
Those have to be down to the, those have to be down to the county by Tuesday. So, in order for them to become immediately effective, we have to declare them as emergency, so they can get down to the county by the county's deadline.
So, they can be down on the tax duplicates in time for next year's tax-
Correct.
Tax collection.
And does that help answer your, because they had that same question, why they were all emergency? They thought we're, everything was going, big emergency. So did I, when I first came too, so. I'm right there with you on that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a new business. And will you read the first ordinance, please? These are, this is the first of two readings.
Ordinance 0092229. An ordinance amending Section 311.01 of the Clayton Codified Ordinances entitled, placing injurious material or obstruction in street.
Mayor, council, staff is requesting city council to add additional language to C O C 31101 to include snow. If you look on the next page of your packets, we created a new subsection E, which includes snow and ice, and pushing it onto the street. It's going to be a minor misdemeanor. Again, this gives something in our toolbox to add, but I don't think we're going to be enforcing it a lot, only when necessary. But it does give us something to get compliance with. The reason why we're doing it, Public Service Director, Mr. Sanders.
Yeah, we, we ran into a lot of issues over the last couple of years. And it's only, typically, it's only during heavy snowfalls. And for you people that live out on the outskirts of town, though, we make one pass, plowing the center lines up, get them, you know, get them cleaned up. Everybody's busy cleaning out their driveways, and, and then we come by and make that next pass, and cleaning out that white line, and then, you know, a lot of unhappy people. And we've seen some residents, and mainly it's on our outskirts roads, we'll say Sweet Potato, Phil, uh, Phillipsburg Union, some of those, they'll actually push that snow, they get so frustrated, they'll shove it right out in the middle of the road. And this is actual language that was added in some of the other cities, and helped them deal with this, where they could say, hey, you know what? Well, this is actually something that was passed in council, and you're not allowed to stuff it. Now, we already had an ordinance in place, if, if I'm correct, Martina, that dealt with other, other, it just didn't have the word "snow."
Obstructions and materials, it just didn't specifically mention snow and ice, which some of the other city ordinances do, some of them are more general.
And the OSP, and that's, and, and of all the things I've seen, the most dangerous thing you can get is a completely dry road, and then have that pile of snow where somebody goes into a panic and has an accident. And those, and they're usually going a little faster too, because the rest of it's always dry. So, those are things that we want to correct if we can. And, and like Chief said, if you don't have to give a ticket, at least you can say, hey, you know what, this is in the ordinance, you know, we passed this. We've seen you do this once, don't continue to do it. Because a lot of these guys are repeat offenders. And I've seen the OSP go on state routes, and they'll just go get the people at the house and say, now, you can take that, put it right back in the ditch where it belongs, and not shove it out in the street.
That, that's the biggest argument anyways, every time the plow goes by, they plow in the driveways again, so they got to clean the driveway again.
And that's what we do.
That's what everybody does. That's why I say, that's the biggest argument.
Sure.
And, and my other question is on section F of that. It says, "Damage or injure any person, vehicle, or animal." Runs out in the street, hurts itself, what are we going to do about it, Randy?
Bird or whatever you, kind of animals you're talking about there.
We're just going to collect it and hopefully dispose of, dispose of it properly.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. And will you read the next ordinance, please?
Ordinance 0092230. An ordinance amending Section 351.011 of the Clayton Codified Ordinances entitled, prohibited parking on city streets with snow accumulation of three inches or more.
Mayor, council, we're, staff is requesting city council change the language on 351.011, the snow ordinance from three inches to two. And the reason why-
Sure. We kind of are in line with the union on this one. Union changed theirs several years ago from three inches to two inches. The fact that we put our snow plows on after an inch of snow in the cities and, and the areas that Mr. Henning and those live in, that they know what it's like when you're going down Seville, you're going down Skylark, and you've got two cars side by side, you can't get the plow through there. It's impossible. That last, the extra three feet of our plow will not get between two parked cars sitting side by side. So, whether it's three inches, two inches, five inches, six inches, doesn't make any difference. We can't get past. Now, I think on the larger snows, we have no issues with that. It's the smaller snows, when, when it's starting to accumulate, we have real problems with trying to get in between those cars. And Matt, and his crew, last year, we, in, in major snow, made a lot of knock on doors, and we made a lot of attempts to get those cars moved. And Chief was doing it himself in the Philadelphia plaid out there. So, this will give us a little bit, you know, little, a head warning to let those guys know, you know, get, get your cars off the street.
Do we, have we ever done the one call? I guess this, I don't know if Chief would know this, but to the chiefs, do we ever do a one call during a snow saying, you know, get off the road? We're going to get more than two inches?
City manager authorizes that.
Okay, cool. So, I know, because I see those social media posts, I see everything else. I just didn't know if the one call also went out.
We traditionally have not done that. So, one of the reasons why we don't is you have to sign up for that. So, you have to sign up for us to get your number. We are able, and we buy it every three years, we buy the 911 data from AT&amp;T. But how many of us still have landlines? So, if you don't have a landline, we have no access to actually buy your number. So, you have to sign up for it. Right now, we have about 1,000 of our 13,000 residents signed up for the hyper-reach system. So, if we did this, we're hitting 1,000. So, we typically don't do it for those kind of things, because it's not that effective.
Okay.
That would be a, a good thing to make sure we have on social media, though, from what, you know, from the, yeah.
Well, and I might add-
Plus the 1,000, yeah.
I might add too, in our government academy, we actually highlight a lot of these, these problems that we have during snow and ice. Actually, the last probably 20 slides is all snow and, snow and ice issues, where with the plows sitting between two parked cars and showing it can't get through. A lot of those things are actually covered during our academy. So, we're getting the word out. I'm getting ready to do a fall newsletter. I think Jack's got one ready now. We're getting ready to do this again, kind of highlighting. And we'll actually talk about some of these changes as well.
Good. Any other questions or comments on that? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Ms. Kelly, second by Mr. Bachmann. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously, and we read the final ordinance?
Ordinance 0092231. An ordinance amending Clay Codified Ordinance Section 531.50 entitled, trimming and removal of trees, plants, and shrubbery to prevent obstruction and protect public safety.
I don't think I said, "Good evening, mayor and council." I haven't been here for a while. Forgot to, I forgot the rules.
Good evening.
One of the things we noticed, and the young ladies actually in our audience helped us out with this one, but we, when we were looking at some of the ordinances for our trees and trimming and some of that stuff, we noticed that one of the ordinance actually says, I think it's 10 foot above sidewalks, 12 foot above the road. And our trucks are 13. So, trash trucks are 13 feet, so we had to change that ordinance from 12 feet to 14 feet above the road as far as trimming goes, because there's a lot of trucks that are actually hitting them. And we usually get calls when that happens, school buses the first call, and typically then trash trucks and other things. So, we had to change that ordinance to two more feet above the street. And thank you.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously also. Thank you. And it looks like we have a total of three resolutions tonight.
Resolution R092259. A resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a tension fabric salt building through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing at a price not to exceed $81,415.
Down at our Station 83, we have the very, very old salt building. As you guys know, about six years ago, we built a new one, a fabric building down there for our salt, which gave us a lot more capacity, and it really helped us out. And our, our snow and ice has shown, because of that ability, the improvement, I think. This fabric building will actually replace that one that's in pretty poor condition out there. We've got the dirt ready to go. It needs to be, you know, we had to push that over yet, fill it in. This fabric building actually will replace the ones that are there now. And we're going to move some of our other aggregates into that building. So, we'll have some grits out there, we'll have all of our gravels and everything else.[1757.92] We're going to clean up as part of the Salem Street paving project. We will probably pave that parking lot that actually comes off of Salem Street as part of the park project at Clayton, and that'll allow us to get some of that material off there and get it out into the, under the roof, because a lot of this stuff has to be under the roof because of EPA issues.
I want to make sure I'm hearing the right thing, so we're tearing down the, the wooden structure?
Correct.
Yeah, the, the other fabric structure is fine.
Correct. Now, that wooden structure will probably stay up through the winter. And, and our next year budget, actually, we have to budget for the concrete stuff to go around and asphalt pad to put that in place, but there's a lot of dirt work to be done out there to get that hole filled in, because that's a pretty good sized hole.
Well, it might fall down before then. It looks pretty bad.
Let's hope not. We put our loader in there.
Okay, any other questions, Randy, on this?
Yes, these, I think it was 70,000 is what we, yeah.
Yeah, we budgeted 70 some thousand, as with everything else, the price has gone up since we got the, the prices, so, but yes, most of that's budgeted through there.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, good. Will you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution R09, 22, 60. A resolution to declare surplus equipment available for disposal through sale or auction.
Mayor, council, we'd just like to declare a 2016 Ford SUV with mileage of 180,000 miles. It's unserviceable, it needs a new transmission. We've parted it out. It's gone through the fleet, it's gone through the detective, it's, it's time. So we would just like to place what's left of it on gov deals and see what we can get out of it.
I'll move for approval.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Chief, I did have one question. You guys still satisfied with the Ford SUVs? Because I see some, did Union go with Tahos?
Tahos are more expensive. So if we intermix the fleet, right now, when we, when we buy two, we can take everything out of the other two that we're getting rid of and move it right into the new vehicles. With Tahos, we're going to have to start mixing parts, and the Tahos are more expensive.
Yeah, I just wondered if you guys were still, like, happy with those, I mean?
We're very happy with them. We, we talked about getting a Ford truck, but actually, we weren't really saving any money on it. But the Tahos are much more expensive. So, I mean, the initial cost would be expensive, and they're about $5,000 more than the SUVs. So I, you know, we'd have to completely refit and move everything over, so it's, it's expensive.
Okay, I think we already voted on that motion, so that motion passed unanimously. And will you read the third and final resolution?
Resolution R09, 22, 61. A resolution approving specified revision to resolution number R08, 22, 58, adopted on August 18th, 2022, relative to amendment of 2022 appropriations and estimated resources.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Merkel, second by Mr. Gorman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passed unanimously. All right, that's it for the ordinances and resolutions for tonight. So the next item is our city manager's report, Amanda.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a couple items for you this evening. We have our park and rec director here, so I won't go too in-depth, because I'm sure he'll want to talk about the items that are coming up. But I do want to remind everyone that the Labor Day fireworks and festival is this Sunday, September 4th, beginning at 7:00 P.M. Also, the homecoming parade is Thursday, September 29th, 2022, and it starts at 6:00 P.M. If members of council could let me know by September 16th who wants to be involved, so I can RSVP for the group, that would be great. I would like to request a work session on October 20th, so we can talk about building inspections with all of the new buildings that are coming online, the new subdivisions that are being built. We want to discuss the other options that we have outside of the county for building inspection. So if council is okay with that, I'll go ahead and advertise, we can advertise and schedule that work session for 6:30 on October 20th.
I already told you, Amanda, I won't be here for that meeting.
Okay. And then, as Randy mentioned earlier, we will be bringing to council the park paving bid for Clayton Park, probably at the next meeting. And then, just as a reminder, we turn 25 next year. It's our 25th year anniversary. So staff is starting to think of ideas on how we can celebrate that, maybe rolling something into our Labor Day celebration next year. Also, we have a requirement to do a redistricting study for our wards. It needs to be done by July of 2023, so staff is beginning to gather information so we can get that out and get that done. And we can bring that, that back to council.
Can we be a part of those conversations when you have the meetings?
Yeah, so I don't see why not. And then, so Mr. Koontz is working with the Dayton Daily News, and we are actually going to be featured as the in our cities in the section of the newspaper for the first Fridays of the month of September. So be on the lookout for that. And then, the Clayton Government Academy actually starts September 7th, and I think there is still some room to sign up. So if anyone's interested, they can call Jack Koontz at 937-836-3500. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Good. Any questions or comments for the city manager? Hearing none. We'll move to visitors' comments. Is there any, we have some visitors here, is there anyone who wants to make a comment? No comment? Well, we're glad you're here. Anyone else? Earl, did you say everything you needed to say? All right, thank you, sir. We appreciate you guys coming in tonight also, everyone coming in. Council, we'll start with Mr. Lieberman tonight.
Well, I really don't have much to say other than to once again congratulate our park commission. You guys are wonderful and, and a big part of Clayton. And I want to thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Tina?
I want to say the same thing, and to mimic the improvement of the parks and the community, and just helping our community grow with families and events, and just getting recognized with what we have featured with Meadow Brook, and increasing members to come to Meadow Brook and activities and events, and that's a huge part of it too. So, thank you, Parks Commission. You guys work very hard, and it's very appreciated.
Thank you. Greg?
I too want to thank the park commission for what you've done. When Jack's gotten up and done his presentations on economic development, he mentions that how the amenities that the community has to offer is one of those things that persons coming into the area expressing an interest as far as the things that they're looking at, and if the parks and Meadow Brook and those things are looking at as far as things that they are thinking positive about, well, we have to thank a group of volunteers, and stressing the volunteer part, that volunteers are always the ones that get overlooked the most because they're volunteers. And, but you're under, maybe underappreciated, but, you know, appreciated from the standpoint, the efforts that you put in, because that's the hardest part. And also, Mr. Gavin, want to thank you for the information. I think it's things that we have to look at to see what our next step is and be well-informed as far as where we're going. So, thank you for the information as far as to get started.
Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Parks Commission also, and wish everyone a happy Labor Day weekend, and hope to see you all Sunday afternoon, Sunday evening at Meadow Brook at Clayton.
I just, I'll echo and commend all the Parks committee members. You know, we have a strong police and fire department, service department, staff here. And you, as your committee, provide something that I know so many residents enjoy, so many kids, and I know this is something Amanda and the mayor and I were talking about. We are now to the point where so many kids in our community look forward to that event every year. And the fact that the bounce houses and everything will be there, it'll be stronger than it was during a pandemic, it makes those kids' memories that much stronger. So that's their hometown, that's what they love, and I love that you guys do that for them, so thank you so much. I'll be there volunteering on Sunday also, always look forward to it. I know my entire family does. I've had residents blow up my phone this week about it to make sure it was still on, so they're excited. So thank you all, thank you to the staff for that. It's just something that really sets our community apart from, like, this local area. And everyone from the local area comes here, they know that that Sunday, which is now honoring you all, is Clayton's, like, that's our day. So thank you. School's back in session, buses are out, watch out for them, watch out for kids walking in Platts without, without sidewalks afterwards. And I just wanted to, once again, thank the police for being out in the Platts. I have seen great presence, and I, I have seen it, residents have told me about it, so thank you. And then, whatever you guys did for a house in Valley Brook that needed some TLC that was not in very good shape, it's worked. The resident called me this morning, and she, she wanted to thank the city. She was like, the zoning officer was there, he was working with them. They've started to pull some of the weeds in the property. I guess I haven't, didn't have time to drive by it today, but it's supposedly looking much better. So the neighbor of that property was very happy, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bachmann?
Just mainly echo everything else that was said before, and, you know, looking forward to, you know, it's kind of referred to as our Super Bowl here, our biggest event of the year, so looking forward to Sunday, and hope everyone has a wonderful holiday weekend that celebrates the, one of the greatest forces in the world, and that's the American worker. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'd also like to commend the Parks Advisory Commission on the great work you guys do. Just think, you know, everything's been fantastic. We appreciate the leadership, and everyone's stepping up, and it is a great group of people, and you have a lot of fun, and that's the best part of it. The only other thing I want to say is just kind of what I say every, every council meeting is, I'm so proud of our, our council and our staff here and our residents too, that we all work together to make this a great city. And we have, we have a small but very strong workforce here in, in our group, and it really, it's really showing. We got a lot of stuff going on, some new development. Hopefully, that'll bring in more, more businesses and more development. I think we're really maturing as a city. Took us about 25 years, but I think that's probably pretty normal. I don't think that's, I don't think that's abnormal at all, so I appreciate all the work from everyone, and that's it. Tim?
I'll move for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachmann, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?